We're gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask that Councilman Bellard lead us in the invocation, and I'm gonna ask a member of the Lafayette Police Department, you could choose among your membership, to possibly have someone come forward and lead us in the pledge. Councilman Bellard.
Lord, you have trusted us as stewards of this parish. Please guard our hearts as we make decisions. May we always be mindful of our service and seek you first in all that we do. Amen.
Amen. Would a member of the department please come forward and lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Parish Council meeting. We as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government, welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. This meeting is a public hearing. If you wish to address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out a blue request to address the council form noting the agenda item number. The blue form is available to you in the far and should be submitted to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica L. Williams seated to my left in the middle, prior to the call of the agenda item. It is important to fill out the blue form completely and note the specific agenda item number about which you wish to speak. If the card is not completely filled out or is not legible to the clerk, you would not be given the opportunity to speak. If you have materials you wish to submit to the council, please give those to Ms. Williams along with your blue form. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule will be in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating, personal attacks, and from making confrontational derogatory comments. I am requesting that the first row to my left be used for media only. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium, and all phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. I am also requesting that anyone who approaches the council state their name and title for the official record. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by robs rules of order. Documents including agendas, ordinances, resolutions, and minutes related to this meeting are posted online at www.lafayette la.gov, or referred to the web address on the top of the agenda. The council encourages your involvement and participation by volunteering for boards and commissions. If you are interested in finding out which board suits your interests, please call 291-8800 or pick up a pamphlet at the door. Got a few chair announcements, members. There's some amendments and notices on some agenda items that you need to be aware of. First item number 4C, 4C Guam Nation App Presentation has been pulled by the administration. That's item 4C, pulled. Item number nine, Ordinance 187, 2017, this is the Joint Collaboration Agreement with CGI Federal Incorporated, has been deferred indefinitely at the request of the administration as they are awaiting a legal opinion. That's item number nine, pulled indefinitely. A happy note, I would like to wish Joe Robidoux, Lafayette City Parish Mayor President, a happy birthday, which he celebrates Thursday, October the 5th. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations. I would also like to wish Lori Toop's Chief Financial Officer a happy birthday, which she celebrates October the 15th. Ms. Toop's happy birthday to you. Councilmember Nanette Cook is handling some family matters and business at this time, and we're anticipating her arrival shortly. So Councilman Cook should be here. And also another item, item number 10. Item number 10, Ordinance 188, 2017, item 10, An Amendment by Legal to Add a Plat is going to be presented to you, and Mr. Esq. is gonna present that at the appropriate time when we get to that item. So there will be an amendment adding the plat at the appropriate time by legal for item number 10. The last announcement I have as chairman is just a personal announcement. As everyone here knows, and those watching and listening on Sunday, we lost the hero. With nine years of service experience, while responding to an emergency call in the line of duty, Corporal Michael Middlebrook, life was taken in a senseless act of gun violence. As council chairman, I want to express on behalf of the entire council and our staff, our sincerest condolences to the Middlebrook family. Corporal Middlebrook leaves to cherish his memory, his wife, a three-year-old daughter, two stepdaughters, as well as his parents. In addition, he leaves to honor his memory a fine Lafayette Police Department, many of which you see here today, under Chief Toby Aguilar and Deputy Chief Reginald Thomas. We lift you up in prayer as well, and just know that we support your efforts. We thank you for the service that you have provided, and those that you will continue to provide going forward, and you have our condolences. It's unfortunate, but these acts of gun violence is not new to our community, but it's touching new people. And my prayer has been since Sunday, and it's gonna continue to be, that somewhere, somehow, we get the courage to do what we need to do to prevent these things from happening. This is one of the lowest times for Lafayette that since I've been here. It's a very difficult time for a lot of people. There's a lot of needs, there are a lot of things that need to happen, and I could assure you that as the current leader of this council, and with the support of my colleagues here on this council, and the working relationship we have with the administration, those things will happen. We will take care of our home, and I want everybody to know that and be confident in that. There are some things that have been brought to our attention and some business that needs to be taken care of, and I sit here today to tell you that it will be taken care of. Rest assured. Again, I ask that we continue to lift the Middlebrook family up in prayer. I ask that everyone be reasonable and considerate of the circumstances and the conditions. We see things that have come out in the media. Of course, social media is a whole different phenomenon today, rumors, and so much more. If we could just stop this one time and just honor the service of a police officer who was acting in the line of duty, going in as others was coming out. If we could just keep that in perspective and keep his family in mind, I think everything could become all right again. With that said, I want to invite the Chief of Police. I want to invite the Chief of Police forward to give us an update, and I would ask that the Mayor President, Mr. Robidoux, I know we have had to discuss some things very recently since being here today, I would ask that you appropriately chime in and share whatever comfort and words that you would have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Toby. Just before you get started, let me say that I appreciate Chairman Boudreau making sure to address the fact that we know there's things we need to work on administratively, and that we are in agreement that we will get this taken care of, and if changes need to be made, changes will be made, but rest assured that it will be taken care of in a way that will be satisfactory to all of you. It's really hard to wrap our head around what happened Sunday. You know, Mr. Middlebrook woke up as a husband and a dad and a family member, just like the rest of us. But as the day went on, he became an officer. When he put his uniform on and left his house and took on a role that really the rest of us don't fully understand, and that's not just to protect his family, like a lot of us do, but it's to protect complete strangers and to put himself in harm's way in a way that I think I speak for the majority, most of us are not willing to do. And so, I want obviously his family, but I want the entire force to know how much we appreciate the fact that you're willing to leave your house and leave the comfort of your home and to leave your family worried to protect all of us. People you don't have any relationship with, people you don't know, but folks that need your protection, and for that, we are grateful and indebted to you in ways that we can't always fully express. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chief, for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. It is indeed a sad week, sad days in Lafayette. I welcome all of the members of the Lafayette Police Department who are here. Your presence here is a reminder to everyone of what is at stake. We lost our brother Corporal Michael Middlebrook Sunday night, the hands of a madman. He was a nine-year veteran of the Lafayette Police Department. Although he was not born here, this was his home, and he served our people. He was a husband, father of a three-year-old daughter, and two stepdaughters. His parents are still with us and survive him. His career is a phenomenal one. It's as if somehow he must have known, because he did it all, and he did it well. He was the spearhead who brought many people to justice in our city, and he was also the cradle of compassion. I have a stack of letters of commendation that he achieved over a relatively short period of time. I'll just point out one. When last year, the governor of the state of Louisiana awarded him, along with the Beyond the Badge Organization, the Heart of Law Enforcement Award for March, and this was given to him in March of 2017, it referenced Corporal Middlebrook's regularly taking expired food items, which he arranged with certain businesses in Lafayette, and bringing those food items before they were discarded to the homeless and less fortunate. Something he often did when he was off-duty, and that's the kind of officer he was. He was an officer's officer, and one that was looked up to, and accomplished in that. Just recently, arrested an armed robbery suspect because he just happened to be seconds away when the call came in, chased the armed man down, brought him to justice. And yet, at the same time, he was very compassionate, and he cared about this community. He is an enormous loss to our department, and he leaves a void behind in our city. It's a great tragedy for everyone. Most, all of the officers at Lafayette PD have never, were not around when the last officer was killed in the line of duty. So this is something new for all of them, and I can tell you, it's tough. But the officers at Lafayette PD are the type of people who took a knee when they arrived on scene Sunday night, next to their brother and said goodbye, and then stood up and chased that murderer down and brought him back in cuffs. And what does that say about bravery, courage? What does that say about honor? That's the kind of officers we have at the Lafayette Police Department, and that's yet another example. What those officers did while their brother officer was lying there is some of the most courageous work I've ever seen, and they did exactly what Middlebrook would have done. So we should all be proud, because we are very lucky in this city to have this group of officers behind us, watching over our city and our children. Mr. Mayor?
Chief, I know it's a difficult time for the department. When I spoke to you on Sunday evening, you were actually en route to the family's house, and I know that's not an easy thing. So again, on behalf of this entire government, this council, all employees, and to the department as well, you all have our condolences.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna invite everyone to stand for a moment of silence in memory of Officer Middlebrook.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to announce that visitation will be held Thursday, October 5th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at our Savior's Church located at 1201 East Broussard Road in Lafayette. And funeral services for Corporal Middlebrook will be held the following day, Friday, October 6th, with final visitation from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and services beginning at noon at that same church, our Savior's Church on Broussard Road. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, councilperson Leah Zebair is gonna share a message that our office received through her seat of an experience that the resident had with the officer name.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chief, everyone here. A constituent of mine reached out to me. She wanted to share a story of her experience with him, and I wanted to share it all with you. I was involved in an accident a few years ago where I was sandwiched between a distributor truck and an elderly woman during a night storm in Lafayette. To this day, I'm very thankful for this officer's kindness and overwhelming compassion. He saw me struggling to find a blanket or some kind of wrap in my car that was still being filled with oil and other fluids from the truck for the woman, and immediately helped me while making sure that I was also okay. He then guided me to his car, put me in the front seat, turned the heater on, and told me that he would be right back. I can't remember if he brought back hot chocolate or coffee, because I was still in shock, but he did the same thing for the other woman once she calmed down. Without even asking, he came back regularly to let me know that she was fine. He can tell I was worried despite the fact that she had caused the accident. There were several moments of pure kindness that struck, stuck with me, but the most surprising came one day later. I was in bed at my parents' house dealing with the back and neck pain when my phone rang. It was this officer. He wanted to make sure I was okay and to see if I needed anything at all. He remembered me telling him I was on the way to a friend's funeral that afternoon and wanted to check in on me. There have been so many moments since the accident that remind me of his genuine concern and kindness, and it's impossible for me to forget him. This is the part where I can go on a tangent about guns or federal regulations, but I would rather everyone know what kind of person he was, and I am forever thankful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna open the floor for council announcements. Seeing none, we're gonna go to the executive presidential report. Mayor President, Mr. Robidoux.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly for those that are on the president's report today, my apologies for having to be here on such a somber occasion, but I do want to recognize some folks that are here today. One proclamation I have is for the Circus de Soleil, and I think we have some representatives here. Daniel, fortunate you're here. If you could come forward, and anyone else that you wanted to bring up, I'll read the proclamation. I don't want to pronounce it correct. Cirque, cirque, why you see you're going Quebec on me. Cirque de Soleil. Cirque de Soleil has a longstanding history of bringing wonder and delight to audiences worldwide, and was founded in the province of Quebec, Canada on July 7th, 1984 by two former street performers, and is now the largest theatrical producer in the world. And whereas Lafayette, Louisiana is honored by premiering the newest show, Crystal, drawing audiences from across the region to Lafayette in the Cajun Dome, and whereas Crystal is the very first experience on ice from Circus de Soleil, featuring world-class ice skaters and acrobats displaying speed and fluidity as they challenge the laws of gravity with never-before-seen acrobatics. And whereas this will boost the Lafayette entertainment and tourism economy and further galvanize Lafayette as a cultural and recreational destination, whereas October 5th through 8th, Circus de Soleil will perform five shows at the Cajun Dome as the launch of the North American 20-city tour of Crystal. Therefore, I, Joe Robidoux, Mayor President of Lafayette Consolidated Government, do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2017, Circus de Soleil Crystal Day, just so happens to be on my birthday too. With that, I'd like to give you this proclamation. If you wanted to say a few words.
First, I want to say thank you to the city council and the people of Lafayette for such a great honor, and we thank you for welcoming us in your wonderful city. And I was so pleased to hear some French. So it's, I feel like home. Thank you.
Daniel's the producer, and we're blessed to have him here, because it is the opening of the nationwide tour, and so he's here making sure, I think, everything goes smoothly. One other proclamation, Mr. Chairman and Council, that I have is for the Chafalaya National Heritage Area. Whereas the Chafalaya National Heritage Area is one of 49 nationally distinctive heritage areas designated by the United States Congress, and whereas the Chafalaya National Heritage Area contains the Chafalaya Basin, the largest river swamp in America, and whereas the Chafalaya National Heritage Area encompasses 14 parishes reflecting the unique culture evolving from life in the Chafalaya Basin, and whereas the Chafalaya Basin is considered the most productive swamp in the world and contributes substantially to the economy of Louisiana, and whereas the basin houses important wetlands that serve as buffers during storm surges, and whereas the Chafalaya National Heritage Area offers exceptional water and water, and water, and water, and water, and water, and water, whereas the Chafalaya National Heritage Area offers exceptional opportunities for both education and recreation. Whereas Lafayette Parish encourages and promotes recreational and educational activities during October to raise awareness of the valuable resources located within the area, therefore, I, Joel Robidoux, Mayor, President of Lafayette Consolidated Government, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as a Chafalaya Month.
I just want to thank everybody in Lafayette Parish and in the City Council as well. I encourage all of you to go out, explore, enjoy, and preserve our wonderful Chafalaya Basin and its watershed, as well as the entire Chafalaya National Heritage Area, which encompasses a 14-parish region. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And then last, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that Lafayette Consolidated Government is hosting a Neighborhood Summit, um, October the 19th and 20th. It is a recommendation from the Urban Land Institute's Resiliency Panel that was here in June. It's an effort between the Offices of Community Development, Planning, Zoning, and Development and Lafayette Police. On Thursday, October 19th, at 5:00 PM at the Vermillion Conference Center at 326 Goche Road, um, the panelists from those departments will focus on the resources provided by their respective departments to the neighbors and to the residents. And then on the, um, on the Friday, it'll be held at the Lafayette Science Museum, beginning at 8:00 in the morning, located at 433 Jefferson Street, and that'll be a little bit of a deeper discussion into LCG initiatives and what makes neighborhood works and give the neighbors certainly the opportunity to provide input into issues that are concerning to them. So that's October the 19th and 20th, Neighborhood Summit. If you have any questions, certainly reach out to either us or the council, and we'll get the information out to whoever needs it. And that's all for me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're going to now move to resolutions. Again, this is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does remain in effect. Can you please read item number five?
Resolution 40, 2017. A resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the filing of a Tiger Grant application for fiscal year 2016-17 for I-49 corridor plan implementation.
Motion by Combe, second by Nakim. Council discussion? Mr. Terrio.
Yeah. I had one question as to what the Tiger, Tiger Grant was being applied for, and from what I understand here, just to respond to them, they're authorizing, Lafayette City Parish Councils hereby authorize the filing of a 2017 Tiger Grant application for approximately $20 million to fund the construction of the Grand Boulevard as an urban-friendly thoroughfare that safely accommodates all modes of travel, promotes neighborhood-level economic development, and increases connectivity between McComb, Vizet, and downtown. I think one question, and Mr. Robidoux, I don't know if you can answer that, I think the question which I had no, no idea how to answer is, what's usually the turnaround before you guys will find out if you have been approved for a Tiger Grant or not?
I was prepared to answer a lot of questions, and I'm not prepared to answer that one. So I'll defer, if Carly happens to know, if she's back, the turnaround time.
I'll speak to the last time we received it. It was about a five-month turnaround.
So from the time we file the application, before we hear anything, it's about five months?
Yes, sir.
If anything's going to happen?
Yes, sir.
And how long before the funds, if we've been approved, are those funds available?
Well, the, the actual timelines, I think we have to have it obligated by 2020, 2022? So it's, it's a ways out.
A good ways.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question. I don't know who can answer, Carly or Mr. Robidoux. As Mr. Williams was reading, I read the same thing about McComb, Vizet, and the downtown. Are, are these monies only for that particular area of the I-49, or does it span from where it starts to where it finishes?
So there is a portion of the five-and-a-half-mile connector where the Evangeline Throughway will basically remain where it is today and operate as a frontage road. And so this grant is applying for that portion that's generally between Simcoe and Taft. Other places, the, the $20 million won't, you know, the, the project as a whole is estimated to be about a billion dollars. So this is working on kind of the local road portion in that area.
Well, is this definitely where it will be? I mean, is there open for any other areas, or we're talking about just that location would you specify right there?
For this grant, it would be in that location.
So who determined that?
Well, this is the only part of the connector design right now where the local roads are really separate from the interstate itself. So the other places, they're true frontage roads where they're alongside the interstate. So it's a lot more, it would be a lot more difficult to treat as a separate project.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I'm saying, how did that come about? Who are the ones that, I mean, was it open to the public to decide that, or the administration did it themselves, or?
We, as the administration, determined that this would be a good way for the local government, which will have a significant financial, um, financial commitment to the project, that this is a way that we could contribute.
Because I do have some constituents that reached out to me because the five-point seven mile will be going through District 3 as well.
Right.
And I understand some of that is District 3, but there are also some other areas that they would like to see, you know, revitalize as well.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm saying, this is a done deal that cannot be...
The other portions that are further north, I assume, that would depend on the frontage roads and would be much more difficult at this point to treat as a, what, what the state calls a segment of independent utility, and so it would rely on the interstate being built to build it alongside of it.
Well, I understand that, but again, I have to answer to constituents, and I want to make sure everyone understands, again, there was no input from the rest of the residents of District 3, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, we have been working through the Evangeline Corridor Initiative and have heard loud and clear that folks want an improved Boulevard. Yes. And we also, you know, have been working for many catalyst projects in the entire length of the corridor. So those are also part of our recommendations, just not for this particular grant.
So you see in the future, I may ask for more funding?
There's going to be a lot of work required along that corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carly, before you go, because I think it's important that we, especially the people who are listening.
Yes, sir.
Clearly understand. One of my concerns going forward is that this, this ultimately will not happen if the confusion remains in place and trying to create opportunities to be clear.
Yes, sir.
And I know we're going to have to do a better job of explaining. This grant for this area is because in that section, nothing changes. The part of this 5.7-mile project in that short part, and that's the reason why they reference McComb, Vizet, and downtown is because the, the throughway as we see it today is going to be there.
Yes, sir.
As we see it today, and that's where the corrections. Everywhere else within this 5.7-mile project, there will be money spent, there will be changes made, but that's where the road will be completely taken away and new roadway will be brought in.
Yes, sir.
And, and if we could start explaining that to people so it doesn't, no one wants to feel left out.
Right.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
And what Mr. Lewis was saying as his constituents, when, when we sit back and we hear, oh, they're going to spend money over here, why not over here?
Yes, sir.
Sometimes it's what's eligible.
Yep.
What qualifies, what can be done. And this is the only section of the project where nothing changes as far as the Evangeline Throughway as we know it today. So maybe we could explain it that way, um, in where, in, like you indicated, there will be other opportunities to do other things, it's just that this grant is specific for this type of stuff.
Yes, sir. I can hire you. Yes.
Well, I got to have two years of separation.
That's right.
If I can take another job. There's, there's people ethically who watch me all the time.
That's right.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Robidoux, you wanted to chime in, or you was just going to answer the question before the expert came up?
No, I just wanted to chime in, if you, if you indulge me for just a moment. Certainly, this, this, um, section that we're addressing is a, is seven-tenths of a mile from the Simcoe to Taft, and it is the section where the connector is designed to go further west and closer to the, to the railroad tracks. And so it's going to leave the northern-bound part of the throughway intact, and, and intact is just not acceptable. And so to Mr. Lewis and his constituents, you know, as the administration, we look at these grant opportunities that may exist and what, where they qualify and where we feel like they have the best chance for us to, to, to hopefully receive some of this federal grant dollars. And it was clear to us that, um, looking across the entire parish, this area because of the connector and because of the knowledge that the federal government has of the throughway, that this was going to give us the best chance to get some of our tax dollars back. And, and similarly, when we decided that the university gateway was important, you know, we didn't look at it as, oh, well, what are the other council districts going to think? You know, I know it's in 3 and 6, but it was the most important thing in my mind for us to pursue, to establish this, this beautification and to improve that gateway corridor. And in, in the same way and with the same analysis with the staff, we go through these things as detailed as possible to say, how can we get some of our tax dollars back from the federal government? What gives us the best chance? And that's how we came up with the seven-tenths of a mile stretch.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I think that's it, Carly.
Thank you.
Seeing no other council discussion or any blue cards on this resolution?
Yes, sir, we do have blue cards.
Please.
First of which, Sally O'Donlon, who signed in, did not wish to speak, but she signed in in opposition and provided a statement for inclusion and no record.
Okay.
First, the four speakers, Mildred Medven, who also provided a statement along with her comments when she makes her comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Mildred Medven. I'm one of the attorneys representing a group of Lafayette citizens who live near Evangeline Throughway and the I-49 connector site and a 40-acre abandoned rail yard with significant hazardous wastes in the same area. We filed a lawsuit in February of 2016 to force Union Pacific to conduct necessary testing and cleanup of the site. Obviously, this should be done before any construction through the toxic waste site is begun. Further, it should be done by the company that caused the contamination, not Lafayette taxpayers. While the Tiger Grant resolution tonight appears to have a simple and laudable goal, it is fraught with loaded language. First, it contains an implicit affirmation by the LCG government of the LA DOT DTD final route and plan for I-49. And I think that was spoken of here tonight. As was made clear by the LA DOT representative at the September 8th I-49 Community Workgroup meeting at the Rosa Parks Center, there is in fact extensive ground contamination in the old railroad yard site. Due to final alignment plan recommended by DOTD, the road will run directly through the contaminated ground. While this is good news for neighborhoods once threatened by the road, it's potentially extremely bad and expensive news for Lafayette and LCG. The problem is that South Louisiana and in Lafayette, there's not much separating ground from water. There are spots in the contaminated railroad yard footprint where the Chico Aquifer, the city's prime source of drinking water, is less than 40 feet below the surface of the ground. As we have documented in court, tests show that the soil and groundwater below the rail yard are contaminated with hazardous waste, including dichlorobenzene, a possible human carcinogen. In 2015, LUS reported in its water quality report that P-dichlorobenzene is present in Lafayette's drinking water. Since 2012, this same chemical has been detected in three of the seven active water supply wells registered to the Lafayette Utility System, the three wells which are immediately north and within 1,800 feet of the rail yard facility. So this is basically a superfund site. At one time, it contained a 35,000-barrel above-ground fuel oil tank, a 30,000-barrel above-ground fuel oil tank, multiple paint houses, oil houses, and repair shops storing oil, fuel, cleaning solvents, and dynamite. Imagine driving hundreds of pylon through this contaminated ground, having no knowledge in advance of the extent, the location, and the concentration of the contaminants. The proximity of the contamination to the LUS wells means that the path of I-49, which is implicit in this Tiger Grant, because this construction wouldn't happen without an acknowledgement of where the connector is going. It poses a clear and present danger to the LUS well field that sits just north of the contamination and the road. If this resolution does in fact constitute an official endorsement of the DOTD route and plan, then we should all have a clear answer to the question of the future of the LUS well field and the cost of relocating it. How much will relocation cost? How long will it take? How much contamination of the drinking water supply will LUS tolerate before undertaking the move? Will ratepayers be asked to cover the cost? Will the state? We know from science that the human brain tends to wait present rewards much more heavily than future rewards. This is called temporal discounting, and we see it all of the time. The desire to move forward with an attractive plan and dismiss potential hazards is a natural human tendency. But we should all learn from situations such as Flint, Michigan. As our political leaders, each one of you are stewards of Lafayette's drinking water and the overall health and well-being of its citizens. You also have an obligation not to saddle Lafayette taxpayers with the cleanup of a toxic waste site, which is properly the responsibility of Union Pacific. In conclusion, if this resolution constitutes an endorsement of I-49 in any sense, it is incumbent upon you to seriously consider all of the ramifications that flow from this final design plan. So for all of these reasons, I am opposed to the resolution presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ascot, just for clarity and for everybody listening here today, the adoption of this resolution does not represent an endorsement, is simply a desire to apply for a grant that is available through the federal government that is funded by taxpayers' dollars, which we in fact contribute to and that we're trying to seek for future planning. Would that be accurate?
Yes, sir. And technically, a resolution is nothing more than an expression of will. It is not an enforceable-type vehicle like an ordinance is, so it's simply, um, an informal approval, so to speak, of the application for the Tiger Grant.
Thank you very much. Mr. Terrio?
Mr. Ascot?
Yes, sir.
She also mentioned that they had filed a lawsuit, I think, against Union Pacific. The LCG, if everything comes to fruition by this resolution and it moves forward at that timeframe, does LCG and its residents, all of the people in Lafayette, do we incur any liability because of that lawsuit? I know I'm putting you on a limb here because it's way in the future, but if there is contamination and so forth, what are, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Well, I am unaware of the fact that LCG has made a party to that lawsuit. I don't believe we are a party to that lawsuit. And so any judgments rendered in that case would not be effective as to LCG because we were not a formal party to that lawsuit. My understanding, I guess my impression from Ms. Medven's comments are that it's a claim by her clients against the company, the railroad company, for contaminating the property and then leaving it in a state within which it requires cleanup. If that occurs, and they're successful in the lawsuit, I assume what will happen is, similar to a superfund case, the defendants found responsible, which are the parties to that lawsuit... to that lawsuit, primarily the railroad company, would be the ultimate entity responsible for the costs of that cleanup in accordance with whatever superfund regulations apply to make sure that that's a clean site.
Okay, very good point. Now, let's take it to the next level. I think she also mentioned this. Let's assume we get the $20 million grant, the Tiger Grant. DOTD moves forward, puts a roadway through the existing site before cleanup. And then after the fact, something comes to show that, yes, we have a superfund site here and all the work has been performed. What liabilities do we have there?
That is an answer that probably requires about three weeks of legal research, but I'll give you what my gut tells me. First of all, I don't, I can't imagine, let me say it this way, I can't imagine that there are not regulations, statutes, et cetera, on the books that prohibit the state from continuing through with a project that it either knows or should know may contain contaminants. I would imagine that those statutes or regulations would require that they first pre-clear that site to make sure before they disturb that site. And then once they get all the necessary EPA, whatever clearances they need, they then would proceed forward with the construction. In terms of us controlling, and this is from my limited understanding of this project, but I don't believe we have any ultimate control over whether the state, if it follows the, you know, appropriate regs and statutes, to prevent them from doing that.
One would presume that if DOTD is moving forward to that site and there still is a lawsuit in that particular area, that, like you mentioned, they would have to clear that before they could proceed through it.
Again, not having done the research, but I would certainly think that at the very least, they proceed at their own risk at that point.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Any other council discussion? Next blue card, please.
Next speaker, Kim Gaudel, and she also provided a written statement for the record.
I too was having a little bit of trouble discerning whether it's a resolution that serves to document Mayor Robidoux and the city council approval of I-49 project or to allow for just a Tiger application to build a Grand Boulevard. The Grand Boulevard, as I understand it, is to be in an area of town totally neglected, redlined, the population of which faces daily untold safety hazards and one left totally disconnected for decades. I've been following, if not shadowing, the I-49 project since October 2015 rollout. I participated in all the processes and attended just about all of the associated meetings that were open to the public. I was engaged in same as a member of the public with a focus on water resource protection and public trust issues. Water resources within the confines of the project area include the Vermillion River, the Chico Aquifer at just 38 feet below the surface, the adjacent Shaguas Spring feature, and the Cypress Island Swamp wetlands contiguous with the airport. All of these natural features contribute to our Vermillion watershed. All are to be protected, and as a designated so-source aquifer, the EPA mandates even greater protection of the Chico Aquifer. The I-49 project was governed by the 2002 final EIS and relative ROD. The document itself is completely inadequate. It's an insult to the environment. It did not capture the value of the natural environment or the threats to the public. The people and the environment deserves more and by law are entitled to more protection. If the process is flawed, the decision will be flawed. The public is waiting for the document associated with the SEIS process that was announced by Lafayette Consolidated Government in conjunction with Louisiana DOTD in June 2016. The environmental sector of the community was completely ignored through the process, concerns dismissed, and were limited to comment cards only. Again, if the process is flawed, the decision will be flawed. We really want this to change, and we want answers, and we want the SEIS findings. In June, excuse me, there's been no open dialogue in all of the different meetings, whether they've been sponsored or hosted by LCG, Louisiana DOTD, the Federal Highway, or ETRT. The greatest threat existing is all the contamination situated in the footprint and the areas of influence. Contamination identified in the initial EIS. The contamination has been known to our government, local, state, and federal, yet there has not been any discussion or closure as to the particulars with the public. It's been sitting there for decades, left to migrate wherever nature allowed and wherever our built environment encroached and exacerbated the situation. It pollutes our groundwater. It pollutes our river. It pollutes our watershed, the Chico Aquifer, and most appalling, our Lafayette municipal water facility located within this area of influence. As part of the Safe Drinking Water Act Amendment of 1996, the EPA mandated a full across the country that every public drinking water across the country be assessed for its relative susceptibility to contamination. In compliance with this, DEQ did the Lafayette North Water Facility and the Wellhead Protection Area. They assigned a high vulnerability rating to the water facility, specifically identifying and including the abandoned rail yard. In conjunction with same, Louisiana DEQ proposed to the city council that they adopt special ordinances to protect our aquifer and specifically that facility. Our city council said no. I ask today that y'all consider this and continue.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Haywood Martin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Haywood Martin. I live in Lafayette Parish, District 6. I'm here representing Sierra Club Acadian Group on the matter of the proposed resolution. We have several points we'd like to make in opposition to adopting this resolution now. And that is, some of this has been a matter of discussion so far, but bear with me, and I'd like to read my points. This resolution appears to authorize not only the application for a grant, but to authorize continued planning and construction of the I-49 Connector, including Evangeline Throughway and the Grand Boulevard. While we support the idea of a Grand Boulevard, we note that there are significant gaps in public knowledge about this project. We don't have a clear statement of the scope of the project which would be implemented as a result of this resolution and the Tiger Grant. It is a, is it a boulevard or is it I-49 Connector would be the question. I think the question was partially resolved here, but we don't have anything in writing. Sierra Club Acadian Group and others have since the rollout of this project been asking for a comprehensive evaluation and cleanup of toxic contamination at the rail yard site, which will use as part of the corridor for the I-49 Connector. Rail yard sites like the one in Lafayette typically have been contaminated with a wide range of toxic substances that are discharged into the ground during maintenance and operation of railroad equipment. Information currently available shows contamination at the site. The site should be posted to limit public access and with information about possible contamination. This should be put in place until a comprehensive and peer-reviewed scientific study shows the extent of the threat to public health out there. We believe that the cleanup of all portions of the rail yard site should be conducted at the expense of the rail yard, not at taxpayer expense. Sierra Club Acadian Group held several public forums on this issue, at which the subject matter experts gave presentations and the public was allowed to ask questions. A key concern that emerged was the protection of water quality in the Chico Aquifer, the top of which in some places rests less than 50 feet below the surface of the ground. The Chico Aquifer serves as the sole drinking water source for a large population in South Louisiana. The public has not, is not assured by any information yet presented that the risk to the aquifer has been properly identified or that measures to protect the aquifer will be adequate. The principal interest of Sierra Club and environmental community in this matter is identification and cleanup of toxic substances in order to protect the groundwater and the public health. It's apparent that Lafayette City and City Parish government have known or should have known about contamination of the rail yard site for many years. Citizens of Lafayette and the public at large are still waiting for a clear statement as to how groundwater quality and public health will be protected during the course of construction of the Boulevard and/or the I-49 Connector. We are asking the Lafayette Council to respond to these questions and/or to obtain responses to these questions before proceeding with construction of any of the, either Boulevard or the I-49 Connector. And I'd like to enter this statement into the record of this meeting, please.
You could provide it to the clerk. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, Carly, if you don't mind, I have a question again. Maybe you can stay sitting there. You might not have to come up. I'm sure you have heard about the contamination. I mean, I've been hearing about it quite some time. So we are applying for this fund and to beautify the area that's supposedly what these gentlemen and ladies are saying about contamination. And my question is, that's where the money will be spent, in that particular area?
My understanding, and I don't, I'm not the expert on the sites in question, but we are looking at the Evangeline Throughway and where it exists today. There's a road there today.
Okay.
Carly, please be clear, that is not the site. I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis, that is not the site. The Evangeline Throughway, as it exists today, untouched, uninterrupted, is what we're trying to improve. Your community and my community that has been neglected by this government in this city for hundreds of years and nobody came and said anything about it, as long as we were suffering, that is not the site. LCG is not participating in any of that. The title of this resolution is "A Resolution of the Lafayette City Parish Council Authorizing the Filing of a Tiger Grant Application for a Particular Fiscal Year to Do These Improvements in This Area." It's not the corridor, it's not the DOTD, it's going after federal money that we invest in here in Lafayette every day with federal taxes that we're trying to get back. If this corridor never, ever happens, we will still be the beneficiary of the work that could be done with this grant, just like the original Tiger Grant that we got. If the corridor never takes place, we gathered all of that information, all of these opportunities, all of these plans are now in our hands, that if ever we run across something good, we could act on it. And guess what? We paid for it through this Tiger Grant. So Carly, we have to, and I'm asking, I love you to death.
Yes, sir.
But you see what's going, we're gonna have to start answering these questions clear, precise, specific.
Yes, sir.
Because people take it and they couple it with something else. And I'm not talking about you, Mr. Lewis, but people take it and couple it with other things to hold us back, to prevent things. We talk about people like, like our utility director don't have his engineering degree and like he would intentionally contaminate the water that he provides to the people. There's a lawsuit pending. I will be more than happy to receive the results of that lawsuit when they come out and when the environmental studies was done. I went to Progressive Church years ago and listened to the presentations. It's not my fault that DOT does their process where the environmental studies come at a later time. The idea that the state is gonna go forward knowingly that this is gonna happen and the water supply is gonna kill all of Lafayette, I just don't imagine that. I don't imagine that. So, Mr. Lewis, with all due respect, I'm here to tell you that what we're doing is not to do work on any potentially or possible contaminated sites, is to create a plan, which we've done, and possibly get some implementation dollars that we could improve, the throughway that I had to navigate, that you had to navigate for years, the ones that I told people pass within a sidewalk distance with the 18-wheelers at 60 miles per hour of the church that I grew up in, the highways that we had to cross to get to churches for our chicken into downtown, is to improve those conditions so we could walk safely, bike safely, and have fun, and children and grandchildren could do it like other parts of Lafayette. That's what we're doing here today.
And that is the reason why I ask these questions, so I can make sure I understand and my constituents understand. And that's why I'm asking these questions, so the public can hear this and the constituent can hear this. And that is the reason why I ask these questions. And just like Mr. Boudreaux said, when the question is asked, just precisely answer the question correctly. Because I have to answer to people, just like everyone else on this council have to answer to people, and just like the people in the audience and the people that are listening, looking at television, we have to answer to the constituent, and I wanna make sure my constituent and myself understands so I can vote on this. I'm voting today, my vote counts. The rest of the week may not count, but today will count. So I wanna know, I will ask questions, I will continue to ask these questions, I may start asking more questions, 'cause I need to know, 'cause I have to answer to people. Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you very much, Carly.
Yes, sir.
You may be seated. Next speaker, please.
Final speaker, Dr. Michael Walden.
Good evening, and first, I wanna thank you for your service of all the council members. I know many of you are probably business people and have had a lot of experience with business and with land dealings. Probably you've been acquainted with Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies. These are studies that are required to determine if there's a potential for environmental liability at a site. Anytime you go before a bank or an investor and you say, "I'd like to start a project right here on this land," they'll say, "Well, show me your Phase 1 study," before they'll give you any money. The government also has to do Phase 1 and Phase 2 studies when they're thinking about doing projects. And we've been begging DOTD for years to do the Phase 1 study and a Phase 2 study of this area. Finally, DOTD has completed a Phase 1 study. They unfortunately haven't made it public. We've only seen it because of Freedom of Information Act request. But the Phase 1 study found 24 recognized environmental conditions of concern. Those are REC's in the lingo. These 24 REC's do include the Evangeline Throughway Corridor. Of course, the biggest REC is the rail yard. Now, that rail yard has been there and been contaminated since the 1890's when it was built. Many of these contaminants will migrate in the ground. We have no idea if those contaminants have migrated under the Evangeline Throughway, but I would bet they have because things just don't sit still for a century. The idea that any businessperson would go into a project like this without knowing the environmental liability that they're getting into, that's just ridiculous. The idea that a government would enter into a project without knowledge of the environmental liabilities would be ridiculous. I ask you, before you go off and start working on projects on the Evangeline Throughway, you need to find out what are the environmental contaminants in that area. You need to ask DOTD to release their Phase 1 study and to release it for public comment. You need to ask them to expand their Phase 1 study so that it looks at environmental contaminants that possibly moved off-site from that rail yard over a century, which they chose not to do. We need to have these answers. We as citizens need to have these answers. Now, you're talking about getting federal money, and you, I guess this may seem like... Now, you're talking about getting federal money, and you, I guess this may seem like free money. To me, as a taxpayer, tax dollars are tax dollars. I want to see my tax dollars spent wisely. I oppose this project right now. I oppose it until there's a good description of the environmental liability that we get into by doing projects in this area, and I will oppose it to DOTD and any funding agencies that you may be applying to. Thank you.
Mr. Robideau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although it's somewhat impressive that they could use this resolution as a reason to come and talk about the Chico Aquifer and the rail yard contamination, it is, at best, a stretch of germaneness. And I want to be perfectly clear and reiterate a lot of what you said, that you have the rail yard to the east, you have Evangeline Throughway heading south that's adjacent to the rail yard, you have a large block boulevard in between, after that to the west, and then you have the corridor to which this resolution is talking about for seven tenths of a mile of the other side of the throughway heading north. Regardless of what happens with the connector, regardless of what happens with the lawsuit, regardless of what happens to anything else that we do, if we get this $20 million federal grant, it will allow us to address seven tenths of a mile of Evangeline Throughway heading north from Taft to Simcoe that has been neglected and has suffered from disinvestment for the last 50 or 60 years. It's got nothing to do with anything else that was talked about tonight. The fact that the connector is part of the resolution is to highlight the fact to the federal government, to make them aware of the area that we're talking about, because they're aware of it because of the connector work. That is it, and I would ask you to please approve this resolution.
And in addition to that, I was just writing as some of the talking was going on, the type of improvements that will be considered are things that go on today, inclusive of in close proximity. You know, the Rosa Parks Facility has been built, they got significant airport improvements that are taking place. The DOTD does concrete repairs within this corridor all the time. The I-49 corridor versus what is being proposed in these boulevard improvements is not even in the same category, okay? And I would hope that you members take that into consideration, and as the mayor just said, you know, there's the reference for appropriate reason, but this has really nothing to do with the corridor. And, you know, I get the federal tax dollars, the state tax dollars, let me be clear on something. The federal taxes you pay will get spent somewhere. The question is, where do you want them spent, and would you like any of it to come back to Lafayette? But if you think that by saying no, that they're gonna send it back, or they're gonna put it in a savings account, no, they're gonna send it to Cleveland, they're gonna send it to California, they're gonna send it to Florida, all they're gonna say, the only thing it says, Lafayette don't want none. But they don't say, "Don't use it." So now, when you bring the tax conversation into it, which is the other poisonous word that tries to scare the hell out of people, this is what you're dealing with. I'm asking you, please, support this. It's an application. It's an application, it's not a guarantee. We gotta stay in the game if we want to be recognized as this progressive city, this growing city, if we want to keep up with everything that has been going on. You can't just pull yourself out the game. We have to stay in it. So I'm asking you, please, support this resolution so that our professionals could go out and apply for our money, to get our money back. Does that conclude all the speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any additional council comments? Seeing none, the resolution has been stated, please call the vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Approved.
Next, we're gonna move to reports in our discussion items. Liz, could you please read item number 6?
Recognize Republic Services on Miss Collections and Fines.
Mr. Terrio, you have the floor, as you have brought this item forward.
Thank you. Who do we have from Republic Services, and also, if y'all could come up to the podium here, guys, and also, who do we have from LCG that can go on the other one?
All the mics, the two outer mics are on.
And for the record, starting with Republic Services, if you guys could identify yourselves for the record, and then with LCG, please.
Sure, my name is Steve Seitzma. I'm the new general manager for Republic Services, been in town for about five or six weeks now.
I know you're a tall fella, and you've got a not-so-much-tall fellow next to you, but if you could speak into that mic, because we're recording as well.
Yes, sir. Move him over again, please.
Yeah. My name is Steve Seitzma. It's a privilege to be here tonight. So, I'm the brand-new general manager in town, I've been with Republic Services for approximately 15 years, but recently relocating to the Lafayette area for Michigan. So, I've been in town for approximately five or six weeks now. Thank you.
And I'm Andy Jones, I'm the operations manager for the Lafayette Division of Republic Services, and I've been here for about three years.
And I'm Mark Dubrock, you're Public Works Director, and I have with me Russell Borg from our Environmental Quality Division.
Okay. Let me start by giving y'all example of one of many, many complaints and situations that have arisen over the years. A number of here, a number of council members up here have been...